For allegiance, to justify the United States of America, in the Republic of Republicans, one nation, under God. Thank you very much for the letter P and justice.
Please call out your vote.
Alderman Duyan.
Here.
Garica.
Here.
Halloran.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Moranti.
Here.
Nisan.
Here.
Rosenthal.
Here.
Sarar.
Here.
Lolo. Presentee Pedro.
Here.
Present.
Motion to dispense with the reading of minutes of December 18th. Committing meeting and place them on file. Can I have a motion and a second? Well, second. Devon. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. A motion to dispense with the reading of the City Treasurer's report as of December 31st, 2018. And place it on file. Can I have a motion and a second? First. Devon. Calvin, second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Committee reports, the copies are on your desks. May I have a motion and a second to place committee reports on file? Eileen made the first, a second. Rob. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. Communications. We have Tracy Delaney's report, annual completion of training reports for members of the planning board and the zoning board. We have the Columbia County Board of Supervisors, resolutions, levying taxes and assessments required for the purpose of the annual budget and levying aggregate taxes and lots issued. And you also got the audit report as prepared by Cicla Corchia and Churchill for the fiscal year 2017. May I have a motion and a second to receive the communications and place them on file? An introduction? Now Tiffany, a second. Rich? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. The list of bills is on your desks. Any questions? From the council? If there are no questions, can I have a motion and a second to pay the bills? An introduction, Rob, a second. Kamal? All in favor, please indicate... Oh, I'm sorry. A roll call vote.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garica.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Abstained. Okay, resolutions, we'll start with one of the... After that, we'll start the meeting. With appointing commissioners of deeds. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garica.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Abstained. A roll call vote, please, for authorizing transfer of funds to the police department gasoline account for the year 2018. A roll call vote, please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garica.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Abstained. The next resolution accepted, accepts a grant donation to the City of Hudson Fire Department for $12,000. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garica.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Abstained. The next resolution accepts grant donations to the Hudson Youth Department for $25,000. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garica.
We'd just like to thank the Mayor's Office for Hudson River Bank for this donation.
Aye.
Thank you.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Abstained.
Carry.
Another donation resolution to the Hudson Youth Department for chairs. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garica.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Abstained. A resolution... Authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding accepting donations from the friends of the Hudson Youth to the Hudson Youth Department. See me?
U.S. six.
Which is...
Calhoun County.
Oh, yes. Resolution, and then the common counsel rule order number five. amended to these two-thirds of the vote. Is there any further discussion? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garica.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Abstained. Now, the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a MOU, a memorandum of understanding accepting donations from the friends of the Hudson Youth Department.
Yeah, another fire department, don't push him. I have a guy in the door.
You're a... You're a kind of a... Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garica.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Abstained.
Carry.
And lastly, the old... Last week's resolutions, the fire department, a resolution accepted donation of... Of the Hudson Fire Department for $150 from the County of Columbia, and also $50 from PDM Fine Arts. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garica.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Abstained.
Carry.
Okay, now we get the new resolution. The first resolution authorizes the sale of real property located at 427 Moore Street to the highest bidder. This was put before finance this evening and forwarded. Can I have... unless there's further conversation? Can I have an introduction and a second? Eileen? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garica.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Abstained.
Carry.
The next resolution is accepting a grant donation on behalf of the Fire Department from the Abadacola Foundation, amounts of $5,000. We're accepting it through the offices of Hudson Development Corporation. Can I have an introduction and a second, please? Devon and Tiffany, second. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garica.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Resolution number 11. This authorizes the transfer of funds from the parking violations of bureau accounts to cover shortages for the fiscal year 2018. Did we need the two-thirds to vote to vote on this?
Did it go through finance?
This one did.
Okay. Yeah, I would suggest you just vote to introduce it.
Okay. So I need a vote to introduce this now by our new rule of order number five.
And then it goes to the committee?
It did not go to the committee.
No, it actually...
If it's a two-third vote, you can then proceed with the motion to introduce it.
Right, without going...
Motion and a second to do so.
Is that a... Rob, and a second. Eileen.
I just have a roll call vote on that. I think you could call for a roll.
Okay. Can I have a... All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Of course, this is your new rule. Let's have a roll call vote, just to make sure. Please.
And the sensible call vote before the inter...
Two-thirds.
To have an introduction, correct?
Yes.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garica. Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Abstained. So that motion passed. Now we have... Now we need an introduction and a second on the actual resolution. So Rob, Kamal. A roll call vote, please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garica.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Abstained. Now, the next one did go to the finance. Can you correct that?
Twelve is no.
Okay. In that case, we have to follow the same procedure.
But can you just say roll call, right? We just think we have a show.
Okay. Just to you, you guys came up with this rule of order.
You know, maybe by way of explanation, what I think we're trying to form consensus around is that if the resolution is the department transferring within its own department, that it doesn't have to go through a committee. But if it's going to use fund balance, or it wasn't budgeted at all, so...
Well, it's accepting a donation, too. So it's really kind of a...
Right.
It's... we're making... we're accepting to the rule saying that we're going to vote. We're going to have a roll call vote to look for it.
Yeah.
So whatever, I don't know. The immediate process, obviously, we're stumbling a little bit.
I just thought you were voting for it to go to the committee.
To not have it go to the committees, right?
And then not have it go because it's...
Did not have it go.
Exactly.
Right. I know.
Exactly.
Okay, in that case, let's...
So here's the thing. The way the rule is written, everything should go to committee. This issue, first month, you did a very good job of getting most of them through. You could, as a matter of course, just have them go to finance, because finance meets before the meeting, right?
Yeah.
And you could pass them on. In the event one of these types of resolutions didn't make it to finance, and there may be other things in the future that don't, then you, as a council, could... You know, if it's a unanimous yes, let's have it introduced. You know, the president certainly reserves the discretion to call that. If there's any sort of question, you could then say, well, wait a minute. We need a member by member. But, you know, with an aye vote, if there's no one in opposition, then I don't care. And that would probably be the smoothest way.
So, to begin this resolution, the department transferred within the public work department. I need an introduction and a second to move it to a vote tonight. Eileen and Rob. All in favor, indicate by saying... how about raising your hand, so we can see? All in favor? Well, it's definitely two-thirds. The motion passes. Now, we need an introduction and second on the actual resolution. Rob? Eileen? Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garica.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Abstained. Another resolution of intra-department transfers. The same procedure prevails. Can I have an introduction and a second to move it forward tonight? Devon and Rich. All in favor, raise your hand, please. That's easily two-thirds. May I have a roll call vote, please? I'm sorry. An introduction and second on the motion, on the resolution itself. Rob? Rich? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garica.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan. Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Abstained.
Carry.
Now, next is a resolution authorizing acceptance of donations to the Hudson Youth Department. This was seen by the youth committee, or... no. Do I have a motion to put it forward tonight? Do I question?
No. I'll make the motion to put it forward.
Second by Tiffany. All in favor, raise your hand, please, to move it forward tonight. That's two-thirds. Can I have an introduction to the actual resolution? Rob, a second. Tiffany, roll call vote, please. We're getting this.
Garica.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Abstained. An intra-department transfer for the youth department. Can I have an introduction and a second to move this forward tonight? Kamal and Rob. All in favor of moving it forward tonight, please raise your hand. That's two-thirds. Can I have an introduction to what's... Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. There was a small revision. On line... On the next to last line, it's being changed from maintenance and equipment building to youth safety.
Same account number?
Same, no. It's... no, it's different account number. So, can I have the introduction and second for the resolution... for the actual resolution? Calvin, second. Rob, a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garica.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Lewis.
Halloran.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Abstained. The next resolution. The DRI committee has chosen the Chasing Company. This did go to finance today. So we don't need a resolution to put it forward. So do I have an introduction and a second? Tiffany? Chair shop. Roll call vote, please.
I have a quick question.
Oh, sorry.
Did he have a chance to meet these people over there?
Oh, yes. In fact, I met with a contact, Julie Passett, last week. And they will definitely make themselves aware of that. In fact, one of the things she said, it's crucial that we, the council, be involved in all decisions to, you know, represent the community, the city. Roll call... any more questions, Anna? Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garica.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Abstained. Excuse me. Last resolution is another intra-transfer. Can I have an introduction and second to consider this tonight? If you move it forward. Rob? John? All in favor, raise your hand, please. That's more than two-thirds. Can I have an introduction and a second? Tiffany? Calvin? Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garica.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Abstained. Now, we have two presentations. First, we're going to hear from AC... I'm sorry, Rebecca Tomatier, Cornell Cooperative Extension. And who's going to be talking about complete streets.
And we actually did not plan this, that we were all together today. So I was asked to come in and just try to talk a little bit about complete streets. Just so you know, I am working on a grant in collaboration with St. Peter's Health Partners called the Creating Healthy Schools and Communities Program. Complete streets is a component of that. And it's a grant targeting the Hudson City School District and its surrounding communities. So what complete streets really are is designing roadways with all users in mind, pedestrians, bicyclists, public transit, and considering motorists. They utilize a variety of interventions, so it's not like a one size fits all per community. And some of these interventions are actually temporary, and some can actually be very permanent, like a complete redesign of a street. And they can include municipal policies and ordinances. What they are not... they are never a mandate that streets get completely redone. They are not meant to be something that delays any projects from going forward. So usually, there's a clause in like a complete streets policy that says that if this... Considering complete streets would actually make this too cost prohibitive, you can waive that and proceed. There's some real benefits that have been seen in communities that have really taken complete streets in mind. The number one, of course, is safety, a decline in all types of motor vehicle accidents. So between motor vehicles, between motor vehicles and pedestrians, bicycles. Basically, safety is the number one consideration most communities take. However, there's a real financial component as well. So, for example, up north in the Capitol District area, there are three cities that have passed really good complete streets policies. And they will tell you altogether, they've received about $130,000 in additional grant money for various projects that include extending trails, making new trails, putting in biking infrastructure, doing bump outs, just various projects. And why this is, is actually with a lot of grants now, they take complete streets policies in consideration. So if you have a robust complete streets policy, you're more likely to actually receive a grant from certain institutions. So some of the ones that are available right now to the City of Hudson, obviously, the grant I've been working on, Creating Healthy Schools and Communities, has a small pot of money that we actually have already bought some things on behalf of the city. So I bought a fixes station. I also bought the traffic light... well, it's not a light. It's a...
Radar sign.
Speed radar sign that's going in near the school. I've talked to Alderman Moranti about People for Bikes grant that's possible and that the city could go after and get some more biking infrastructure, if that's something they're interested in. And I've talked to him about the idea that on the grant I'm working at now, I'm available to the city to actually help write grants. So if you want to give me ideas that you have, things you would like to see funded, I can actually use my time to look for grants on your behalf. So those are just things that are there for the city at this point. Some of the other communities around us that have passed like complete street policies, Kingston, Troy, Waterbelly, and Cohoes. And I already discussed kind of how they benefited from that. If this is something the city decides to pursue, there's several experts that are also available to you through the grant I'm working on. I'm always available, but I will admit I'm not the foremost expert in this in the nation. However, somebody by the name of Robert Johnson is considered like the expert. And he would be available for like phone consultation with you guys. Justin Booth, who is from Gold White Buffalo, is another one. He's kind of considered a New York State expert that would be available. And actually, Will Malcolm, who helped draft the Cohoes, Waterbelly, and Troy ordinances, said he would be willing to come down and speak also. So I can arrange at any time for any of those three people to be available to the city if they would wish that to happen, if you decide to proceed. So I just... I know that was... I was trying to keep it really brief, so not to take you much time. Are there any questions? Anything I can help clarify about complete streets?
Counselor? Oliver? Can I...
Yeah?
Begging, one of the things... thank you very much for... That's been coming up during my work on the complete streets is the... The Empire, at one point, when the Empire State Trail or the Empire State Bike Project tried to come through Hudson, they wanted to take some parking spots. And I want to make sure that, you know, to convey that this isn't something like that. You don't... complete streets aren't taking parking spots away. They're just making it manageable for everyone to live cohesively together, correct?
Absolutely. It's not a one size fit all for any community. So actually, the community will kind of decide what route they want to take. I know I've seen up in Albany where instead of like dedicated bike lanes, they just put up signs saying they're like reminding motorists that's a shared roadway. So just kind of a, you know, there might be bikes here, just remember that and watch out for them kind of deal. So it's never one size fits all when we're talking about complete streets. And some things are... you can put in are really temporary. So you can actually do something, see if it works, see if it causes issues, and then take it back out without really causing distress for too long.
Alderman, any other questions? The Republican House...
As far as grants, would... For example, with damaged sidewalks, with the residential areas, will you help the city to look for a grant that would help that, those particular areas? Or it has to be an individual property owner for that grant?
Oh, for the grant, it's the city. So I could help the city look for funding along those lines.
So... Well, that's a mad ask, that you look into that for us?
Absolutely.
Sidewalk repairs? Sidewalk repairs?
I will, you know, know that right now. Absolutely, I can see what I can find. And, um, as I find things, I will contact whoever asks me to and let you know. Um, and I have been, when it's just been general grant opportunities, I've started, forwarding on Alderman Moranti, if that's okay with you still. So that I just wanna make sure you, the city's aware of opportunities.
Well, I'll give you my information. I have a lot of people that are interested in sidewalk repairs, and I know Moranti is as well. Um, we brought that issue up at our housing transportation meeting through, um, concerns of the, uh, constituents. So it's very.
Okay, absolutely, because this is one of the things we're working in, um, pedestrians, especially sidewalks are very important, so.
Oliver, any other questions? Republican? Hi, behind you now. Yes, I'm sorry, Don Moore, very briefly, um, as a cyclist and someone who's sort of been looking at Hudson for a while, I would be curious if you have any, any examples of how an impacted downtown like this deals with, with bicycling? Where indeed parking is almost universal in the streets? And if you have anything, you can just, I'll give you a.
I know, uh, I, I can't point to very specific projects, but I know Troy has become, actually become kind of a whole standard in all of this. And I know they've done a lot of things in those terms, I think, not that this would be right for Hudson, I think some of the things they've actually ended up doing is turning some two-way streets into one-way streets to allow the bike lanes and the parking to exist. Again, that's just an example of what I've seen. Um, but there's up in Albany, like I said, they've done more just safety signage and reminders. So there's different, uh, examples throughout. And like I said, anything that anybody's interested in, like to always reach out to the actual people doing some of these projects in those cities, and they would be happy to give more information.
Thank you. Jonathan, is there any question?
Not a question, a comment. To the extent that, um, good sidewalk infrastructure is part of a complete street scheme in a city, um, it's going to be incumbent on you as the council at some point to address the problems in the city code regarding sidewalks and street trees. Right now, sidewalks and street trees are the responsibility to maintain and also for liability issues of the adjacent property owners, so that, um, when we, if we were going to really incorporate complete streets approaches, we would wanna be able to think kind of comprehensively about repairing sidewalks and, um, adding to the street tree canopy all at once. We can't really do that right now because of the way the city law breaks it up and makes that part of what is really the public realm, the responsibility of individual property owners. And that's why, as you walk down the streets, the sidewalks change every time you change progress. So that's something that.
The issues are being addressed both from the housing transportation.
And legal.
And legal. So they're on the agenda. Good. Any other questions? Yes?
Yeah, Peter Spear, you mentioned the, sort of the safety benefit and the economic benefit. I wondered if you would talk about the sort of the health benefits?
Um, absolutely, uh, the health benefits are obviously in making a city more walkable or bike friendly, is allowing more physical activity to the community, both adults and, um, children. And I know there's been a lot of talk from my counterparts in the school about things like walking school buses, and those types of safety, health, things kind of go hand in hand. Like, how can we encourage people to get out there and move without providing them a safe space to do so? And that's very much at the forefront with a lot of these types of projects and stuff that I do, is creating a, actually, a whole community of health, where if you want healthy vegetables, if you wanna get out and move, you can. So absolutely, and I was trying for time, I didn't get more than all of that, because there's also equity issues of the idea that if you can't afford or call a car, having complete streets allows you another mode of transportation to like get to a supermarket, get to a job. So there's all sorts of things at play when talking about complete streets.
Thank you.
And, and I'm always available beyond here, so if you come up with a question, uh, I'd be happy to answer it. You can give me a call, email, I have cards with me, so if you wanna grab me quick after the meeting, I'm happy to provide all that information.
Thank you. Thanks, thanks.
Just, just one comment, I think to go along with the grants, uh, the crosswalks and the accessibility for handicapped, I think could be something that could happen sooner rather than later. There are a lot of elderly people who are trying to manage to get their carts, their, scooters across the street, and there's a lot of crosswalks in the city that are hard to navigate.
And to add to that, cut corners. We need that as well.
Okay, I will, I'm taking notes, and I will begin to look at different opportunities and make sure that it gets to where it needs to go.
Thank you. Next up, also, Jonathan, would you introduce them since they're kind of.
There's a lot of us, we can introduce ours.
Explain why they're here.
I have to confess, I can't remember all your names.
That's fine, I have an old introduction about the project as well.
You haven't mentioned.
Yes, yes.
These are people from the Cornell Cooperative Extension who are concerned with, um.
Climate. Also, my name, my name's Tracy Tesco, uh, these are my colleagues, Kelsey West and Audrey Crop. As we said, we work for Cornell Cooperative Extension of Columbia Green County, and are involved in a partnership project. This, this allows us to work throughout the Hudson Valley to provide resources to communities in terms of climate resiliency. Um, so the reason we're here today is to go over some work we've been doing on this past year. We've been working with the city of Hudson to complete what's called a climate resiliency planning tool, and it's accompanied by a recommendation summary. Um, so this planning tool is a summary of the local policies, projects, and plans, and it's designed to help provide municipal staff guidance on future planning efforts. And this planning tool, it actually counts as one of the thirteen priority actions within the Climate Smart Communities Certification Program. For those of you who don't know, the certification program is statewide, and it, um, it provides local governments with guidance on how to do a number of things, including reduce greenhouse gas emissions, save taxpayer dollars, and advance community-based projects among many other things. Um, so I'm going to turn it over to Kelsey, who's going to highlight just a few items from the recommendation summary. But I actually have hard copies of the recommendation summary, along with supporting information on climate smart communities. Do you mind if I pass it out?
So I'll please, please, passing that out, I'll get started. Uh, through the Climate Smart Resiliency Planning Tool, areas of strength were identified. Um, a few highlights that we found were the recent measures taken that preserve, uh, to foster the relationship with Hudson River. Examples include the preservation of undeveloped shoreline, which is valuable for flood resiliency, and also open space conservation and recreation. And that Henry Hudson Waterfront Park is an excellent example of its practice. There are also collaborative community organizations, such as the Everett MAC Estuary Education Center, that will provide interpretive education to the community, and also support scientists and student-driven research. Another strength was, uh, the city of Hudson's Community Resilience Building Report through Nature Conservancy, which does an excellent job of both identifying climate risks and also vulnerabilities. This process also established a core team to engage stakeholders and ultimately to implement priority adaptation actions. We also identified a few areas of opportunity for the city. We learned that the city is currently developing a natural resource conservation plan, which could incorporate climate resiliency, um, uh, measures and shoreline and wetland, um, protection and restoration where applicable. There's also an opportunity to officially adopt the Columbia County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Um, having a FEMA-approved hazard mitigation plan, um, allows the city to increase, increase, receive increased funds, excuse me, under the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. We realize that this actually may have already been completed, um, since we last communicated with the city. I'm getting a nod.
Oh, good.
Excellent, okay. Wonderful. Um, you could also possibly revisit the City of Hudson Comprehensive Plan and include, um, explicit language, uh, for resiliency as a mission. Uh, the city of Hudson has also participated in the Cornell University Climate Adaptive Design Studio to produce designs for climate resilience and connected waterfront areas. There is an opportunity to incorporate these designs in the future. Uh, lastly, we recommend considering the Climate Smart Community Certification Program. The city has already addressed some of the certification requirements, which include the Climate Smart Resiliency Planning Tool and the Community Resilience Building Program, or Process, rather. Uh, the city has a really strong and active, um, Conservation Advisory Council, uh, which may have the capacity to function or, or to organize a Climate Smart Communities Task Force, um, and at point a Climate Smart Communities Coordinator. Uh, many of the recommendations within the summary that was given to you, and also the ones that I've highlighted this evening, um, are, are actually climate smart community actions, so you're, you're in a very good position to apply for the certification. Pass it back, we'll be.
So I just wanna follow up with a few, um, next steps, uh, that you can consider. Uh, of course, we recommended the city review the recommendation document, and, um, we can also provide you with the tool itself, which is, is actually an Excel tool to help, um, divide up the different areas. Uh, and then throughout all next year, uh, we have within our work plan to follow up with the city on occasion, uh, with some updates, or as we see, uh, resources or opportunities come up related to climate resiliency. And, um, as Kelsey mentioned, a great first step to becoming a climate smart community is actually taking, uh, the pledge. And we actually included the, uh, copy, a draft copy of a pledge with the, uh, recommendation summary that you have. Um, and really, all you have to do is, is agree to adopt and, uh, take the pledge, and then you can take your time, there's no obligation or time limits or anything if you wanna initiate, uh, looking into the program. And our organization is also able to provide assistance with becoming a climate smart community. We're working in other communities as well, um, doing things like assessing where the community might be at as far as, um, points in the system, or whether or not they might be able to reach, um, certification, and where they might be, uh, easy things they might be able to do to gain points to reach, reach certification. And we've also been working with some communities in the process of actually submitting their documentation and, and getting everything they need in order to try to submit to become certified as well. So if that's, uh, in your mind, we might be able to, um, offer resources and assistance with that in the future. Um, and, you know, because we went through this process with the city's, uh, planning documents, we've become very familiar with a lot of your, um, activities and actions and policies that you've done related to climate resiliency. So use us, please feel free to use us as a resource, and if you have any questions, we can answer them now. Uh, and we'll actually follow up with, um, you and send you the completed, uh, tool and the digital copy of the recommendation summary. And, uh, we'll provide you with our contact information, and you can feel free to get in touch with us, um, if you have any other questions beyond tonight.
Oliver. Any, any questions? Richard.
So, okay, so in terms of like your main contact, uh, do you, do you have like a main contact? Is this going to CAC or?
Uh, well, we initially can't, we've been in touch with the, um, CAC. It's up to, really, it's up to you if you want to, um, appoint someone. We kind of somewhat have been in contact with you as well. Um, and this, I think, is really the first the city has heard about it, so if there's someone on your council that you would like to have as our main contact, um, you know.
I think it works fine with the CAC, because they are a council, um, entity.
Okay. I think that's how most municipalities handle it. A lot of, yeah, a lot of this work is run with the CACs.
Questions? From the community? Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, moving on, and, uh, any new business, any, uh, community, uh, comment? Or Oliver first, please.
Um, I just, I just wanted to announce that today, um, you know, up in Albany, um, the, this afternoon, the state just passed the gender, uh, agenda, which is the Gender Expression and Non-Discrimination Act. Uh, this bill adds gender identity as a protected class and prohibits discrimination in housing, employment, and public accommodation. So that has just been passed in Albany, um, and it just wanted to, um, make everyone aware. Also, what they passed is a ban on all, um.
Conversion.
Yes, conversion therapy, thank you. So any sort of conversion therapy that has also been passed. So just so that you're aware, that's a big one.
Come on.
Um, I just wanted to do an update, 'cause I know the school district has, um, is looking for a broker now.
Yes, I'm waiting to hear from them. We've been in conversation about, you know, their intentions and ours. No, nothing, very good. Tiffany, did you have some?
Yes. Uh, I just wanted to let everybody know at our next housing and transportation meeting next month on the sixth at a quarter to seven, uh, we will have Tim Matisse, the executive director from Boys Towers, who will also bring along the, uh, developers for their, uh, upcoming new project. So I encourage you all to join us and ask plenty of questions.
Thank you. Dominic.
Okay, just letting everybody know, next month, February twenty-third, we're having our second annual Hudson Polar Plunge, so, um, Rich has said he's gonna drop in, he said this year, so. It did say that, did it? If it weighs one million dollars, it did. There's a price to everything, right? Um, so go to, with hudsonpolarplunge.com, uh, get, get on board, get a, get a team, and, um, look forward to it.
And Oliver? Public? Have you really had, anything, question you'd like to discuss? Oh, in that case.
Motion, Jerry.
No!
Oh, at Pride's Neighborhood, uh, February eighth, we will be having a youth fashion show at Helsinki from six to eight. Um, you can buy tickets on Helsinki's website or at the door.
Please support our kid, Chris, that's a baby. Four million dollars, Thomas, you know.
And listen, one more question. I got, sit around. Okay, I'm gonna say, um, real quick, uh, the first time ever that, uh, this coming Friday, Out Hudson, the city's LGBT organization, as well as S, SBK, is co-sponsoring, uh, at the library this Friday from six to eight, the documentary on Brother Outsider, The Light and Times of Bay of Western, so, um, please go and see that.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Well?
Motion. Three, two, one. We have our, our, our Women's March coming up on the nineteenth, Saturday, to encourage everyone to join. There's a, a Martin Luther King, uh, celebration as well at Shiloh Baptist Church this weekend. Encourage everyone to come out and join as well. In memory of today, which is Martin Luther King's birthday. So, let's take Martin Luther King's message and interpret that throughout our work with our community and friends, and keep a positive 2019.
I have one thing. Uh, I just wanna say that due to the government shutdown, that SNAP benefits are, uh, under a certain amount of pressure, uh, and at risk, so just keep that in mind when you think about what's happening in Washington, and how it affects the local families who depend on SNAP, which is about food and providing sustenance to our communities. Just to remind them.
Sorry, and with that being said, I read an article that for New York State, our, uh, people that do receive SNAP will receive their benefits in February on the.
do receive SNAP will receive their benefits in February on the 17th of this month, which is strange, but that's...
Well, they're, they're getting ready for February. That's part of what's going on.
For New York State, because everyone else is still getting theirs on the first, correct?
Thank you. Anything else?
I want to ask the council a question before we leave and say goodnight. In light with everything that is going on in our country, with all the negativity and now with the government shutdown, I would like to ask the council, is there any disagreement with any of you, if we can just put that portrait of Donald Trump down and keep it down? Is there any disagreement from the council? Or do we need to vote on that?
Although, we tried that last year and then someone turned it around again, so...
Well, it's 2019. Can we let it down? Is that all right? Is there any disagreement from the council?
I think we ought to think about that. I'm no more in support of this president than anyone else, but I just, I suppose the symbolism is something that, I don't know, I just, I think it's something we ought to think about, you know, what are we trying to say? And this is the people's building.
From my constituents' behalf, we're saying that this president has projected nothing but negativity since he started. And this country has been uproar, upside down, and nothing seems to change for the better. I know a lot of people are waiting for an impeachment or something of that sort to that extent, you know? If you disagree, you disagree, but...
I don't disagree with any of that. I just think this is the people's building and it's, it's a gesture.
You all feel...
Why don't we just table it for our next meeting and so give us some time to think about it and let people respond? Because, you know, we do have to remember there are about 500 registered Republicans in the city. Not that they should get the privilege of determining our policy, but I think we should think about it a little bit further.
Is there any that we have to display?
Absolutely not.
There used to be, they're taking them all down.
Arrangement there. But Marjorie Young isn't even a representative anymore.
That's true.
Take them all down. Take them all down. Yeah.
Yeah, you're saying to take them all down. All in favor?
Yeah.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Good rap.
Thank you.